Good afternoon and welcome to the pre-council meeting, Monday, March tenth. Item one, Kate, could you please call role?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mrs. Santeuk. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knudsen.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Thank you. Item two, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, additional items. Three A, Dr. Alan Kolokh, Kolokh? Nebraska Watershed Network, discussion on the Missouri River Research Station.
I don't see Dr. Kolokh here yet. He was aware he's supposed to be here at 1:30 so, I mean, I can give you some information if you want me to, or we can just postpone it to another time.
Well, I would skip to item three B, but I don't see Mr. Al Provandra here either. We could go on to the city administrators' report. Oh, we have someone from his office? So, we can go ahead and-
She's Al today.
I know he was coming, but I don't know if he wanted this last night here, but I'm also from Carlson, that's the one I'm talking about, Jamie Akman, a material designer and been working with the department.
Are you prepared to talk, or is Al Provandra?
I think he was going, I don't know if he was going to give an update on the construction process.
Okay, we can, we can wait, maybe go on to the city administrators' report? Okay?
Apparently, I'm on a sync here. I just would open it up to any questions that council members have, obviously staffs here as well regarding any of the additional reports, so...
I just have one, Dan. The employee policy manual, I've asked a couple of times about it. I guess maybe what I should have maybe have done is taken the initiative to talk to someone, but I got some ideas and suggestions, and I didn't know if you wanted to run it through all your department heads and then bring it forward to us to review and make suggestions, or how?
Well, I guess what I would ask, Paul, if you have some specific thoughts, that you get those to me if you could.
Okay.
Because where we're at, we've, there's been kind of a lengthy process because there were a lot of deficiencies in the current policy manual in there, so we're having to rewrite, we're having to create new policies where we had voids. So this, when we bring this forward, hopefully it'll address as many of the areas that need to be addressed as possible. But Amy is just getting in the final stages, meeting with Karen and I, going over revisions. So if there's some things that you would like to provide us, now would be an ideal time to do it.
I'll, I'll do it later through an email or a phone call.
That'd be great, and then if we need additional discussion or explanation, we can set up a time too. But yeah, now, now would be the time.
Okay.
Councilman Blood.
Can Mr. Burks come forward and just give me a brief update about what he discovered at Elbow Bend?
Yeah, yes. Larry?
Yeah, last week we went to Elbow Bend and we did find that there was a possibility that one gentleman had converted a garage to some living quarters. So we sent, Mr. Christensen sent code out to investigate that. There was also one other property where there was, it appeared to be some construction going on inside. So we, Mr. Christensen put a stop work order on the doorknob and apparently they called later on, so...
So for people that are watching, you're watching this just for clarification, why are we doing this?
There was a, this is the floodway where some of the properties were damaged beyond a 50%, and some are saying that they weren't damaged beyond a 50%. So-
They were asked not to rebuild in those areas.
Right, right. There's, there's some folks that are requesting permits and then some folks that have been denied permits, so there's a bit of a conflict there. We're trying to clear that up with our enforcement right now.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Larry? Of the houses that were damaged 50%, how many of those filed for relief from the Board of Adjustment within the timeframe specified in the ordinance?
I'm not sure of that number at this time.
Chris could answer that, I think, Steve.
Mike's here.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Nobody has been to Board of Adjustment for our determination on floodway or damage, substantial damage. We've been pretty liberal as far as the timeframe, because we didn't want to condemn, actually we'll go through the condemnation process before the buyout took place. The buyout is in process now. If we went through condemnation for the buyout and acquired the home, that would provide no relief through FEMA grant, through the FEMA grant to those homeowners if the home was condemned and torn down prior to the grant being done. We have had two homeowner, owners that have submitted information and have gotten, actually gotten building permits, they submitted either revised building permit cost estimates from licensed contractors showing how much it would cost to repair the structure. In one case, I believe we've had somebody turn in a, an appraisal that gave an appraisal at a higher amount so that their damage was not at the 50% level. So two, two have actually gotten permits. I'm dealing with two or three more right now who want to get permits. Some have taken the buyout, I understand, from the NRD already. And the NRD is working, appraisals have been done on all the property down there. The NRD is trying to contact or get, set up meetings with those property owners who have been interested in the buyout to present the, the offer to them.
So is the, this is a little different than what I'm dealing with across the river, Chris. We filed 403 applications for structures that were more than 50% damaged and ordered them torn down. They had 30 days to apply for a variance. Is the NRD the one that is responsible for the ordering of the 403, or is that you, or the city, I should say?
Honestly, I'm, I'm not familiar with the number 403, which program that is.
That is the FEMA criteria for removal of flood damaged structures.
Again-
That were damaged or destroyed.
We, we did not order, we have not ordered any structures torn down at this point. Again, because the buyout program was in process, is my understanding, if the, if we had ordered them, if we had, if the council had taken formal condemnation action on those and they were torn down through that condemnation action, then the grant program, which would have paid the homeowner for, for the property and the structure, they wouldn't have been eligible for that money.
Okay, FEMA paid 75% of the cost of the demolition for the structures that were ordered torn down across the river. Iowa paid 10%. So the city was, or the, yeah, the city was obligated for 15, 15% of the money. That's what it cost us to tear those down.
Did you reimburse the, the property owners for those structures?
FEMA did.
With the, the way our buyout program runs going, part of the whole FEMA grant will be property acquisition and condom, and demolition of the structure.
That's the 404 part, is the acquisition of the land, the real property once it's over, and the, and the house, post destruction or post demolition.
I didn't follow you there.
There's a 403 and a 404 in FEMA. 403 is to just, to take the houses down that were destroyed or substantially damaged. The 404 is the buyout provision. That's what it is.
We're, we're, we're doing the buyout program. And again, we did not go in prior to the buyout to tear down any homes that were destroyed or damaged because we wanted them to be eligible for the buyout program.
Mike, have you got any comments on that?
Basically, my understanding was that the NRD wanted the structures present for the buyout so that they could see what they were bidding on for price-wise or, you know, appraisal.
Structures had to be appraised at their pre-flood value for the buyout program. Again, if, if we had gone through the condemnation and taken down the homes, property owners wouldn't have gotten any benefit from the buyout program for their structure.
Did you do the damage assessment calculator, Mike, on the structures?
Yes, we did.
So you had, and you used the appraised value from the county assessor?
We used the appraised value from the county assessor. We did the FEMA guidelines for the damage assessment, and they were all over 50% in Elbow Bend, which is the area we're talking about right now. In the meantime, they came back with separate appraisals, different bids from different contractors until they could, you know, presumably make it work. In the meantime, floodplain administrator okayed two of those properties to be reconstructed, so permits were issued for those.
Councilman Blood.
Councilman Carmichael, basically the reason I asked too, what's been going on is we had some people that were unhappy because they had taken the buyouts and they had felt that some people were doing some things under the radar in that area. And that's what this is all about, is we wanted to make sure that nobody was trying to build that shouldn't be building, nobody should be repairing that shouldn't be repairing. So the process, we weren't as concerned about as much as what's happened after the process to see if anybody's doing anything that's not permitted.
And that typically happens when you allow them to sit there for a couple of years, people will go back in and rebuild them. I mean, they've done it down there for a hundred years.
Which is why they like it off the grid. And you can't blame them, but can't allow it either, so...
I understand. Well, I got Mike.
Yeah, ideally, it would have been nice if we could have went in right away and demolished the properties, but the NRD wanted the structures present for the buyout before they gave any money to the homeowners.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
The only thing I was gonna add real quick to point out, which I'm sure you saw, we did receive 37 applications for the new human services resources manager position. And this last week, Thursday and Friday, Karen Jackson and I interviewed the top five, at least the ones that met or exceeded all the qualifications. So we hope to be able to move forward fairly soon with an offer of employment and background check, et cetera. So that is moving along.
Councilman Blood?
Is Amy Battalion sitting in on any of those interviews?
No, those were conducted by both Karen and myself.
Since one of the reasons we suggested and put it in the budget that we bring this person in was to, to cut down on, on legal expenses, it might be, and we never done even more, it might be affected to have Amy Battalion with her expertise in on some of those interviews?
Well, I, I can tell you what, a couple of the key areas, I don't want to get a lot of the details. We, we honed in very specifically on labor relations as well as personal investigations in terms of criteria for the people we were looking at. So only those people who had those skills and experience were interviewed, so that was, that was weighed in on thoroughly.
Again, it's nice bringing it, and that's what we pay her to do. I mean, that's part of, of why we have her on board. And you obviously can totally ignore my suggestion, but I strongly recommend you at least consider it.
Again, we've already completed the interviews and, and those are both very-
You're completely done.
Yeah, we're completely done at this point, yes. Any other questions?
See none? I'll go back up to item number three A. Is Dr. Alan, he is, Kolokh?
Yes.
If you would like to come forward. Nebraska Watershed, discussion on Missouri River Research Station. Welcome.
Good morning. Good afternoon, I guess. I apologize, I just got out of teaching and it takes me a while to know where I am after I do that. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, but I don't know if you have access to where the city council can see that. Do you, if you do, can I load that up?
Phil, would-
It's not essential, but it would-
We're not really, we're not really set up for it.
Okay, that's totally fine.
These are pre-set up before.
I truthfully don't know. Again, thank you for entertaining my visit today. As it says here, my name's Dr. Kolokh. I'm the director of the Nebraska Watershed Network. The Nebraska Watershed Network is a student oriented organization through the University of Nebraska, Omaha. We currently run a field station on the Elkhorn River, 245th and Q Street. And our field station is involved in teaching, also community engagement. We've run a number of different activities for the community out of the station. The station was originated in 2012, and it's also involved in research as well. Once we built the first station, our intention was to put a station on each of the three major rivers that surround the Omaha Bellevue area. That would be the Missouri, the Platte, and the Elkhorn. The Missouri, obviously, to the east, the Platte to the south, and the Elkhorn to the west. And so what we're interested in doing is re, is locating a second station. So what I'm, the reason I'm here today is I'd like to talk to you about the feasibility of locating one of our stations in Hayworth Park. And effectively, I was just there yesterday, and the, the location directly under the 370 Bridge seems as though it would be ideal. We've had conversations about that. Jeff and I have had some conversations about that as well. Perhaps the most salient point for you is that I'm not here asking for funding, I'm not here looking for financial support. This, this station would be completely supported by external funds that we already have. So I'm not looking for support, I'm simply looking at, simply looking at the use of the land. And with that, I'll, I'll certainly take any questions.
Mr. Cook.
I just got a few. I'm looking, I don't know if this is from you or not, but I'm looking at a, what I think is a picture of what would be on the side of the river. Part of my concerns would be, I don't know how, there's a whole bunch of, it looks like Boy Scouts that are around this, but it looks like you're right on the bank.
Yes.
I'm assuming we're drawing samples of water-
Correct.
Or monitoring it somehow. My, my concern would be, you know, if we get kids down there, you know, is it, is it fenced, is it controlled, that we're not going to have issues of maybe vandalism, kids trying to get on it and end up in the water, or something negative would happen. And of course, if there was any damage or any flooding that would damage that, there would be no look back on the city to help reconstruct or put it back to where it was.
You're, you're, you asked really two, two different questions, and you're absolutely right. Relative to the second one first, you're right, there would be no, no looking back at the city relative to if there's flood damage. We know, we know through recent history that the, the Missouri can potentially flood. However, if you look at the illustration that I, I know you're all looking at of the Elkhorn River Research Station, it is actually on stilts above the 100-year floodplain. So it's designed that way. It's also was, I have colleagues at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer at Papio Missouri River NRD who would be interested in, in helping with the construction to make sure that it, it is out of the floodplain. It would, it would be a no-rise, a no-rise structure so that when the river rose, the structure itself did not contribute to the overall rise in the water level. We've safeguarded relative to those type of issues on the station in the Elkhorn, and we would do the same thing here.
Okay. Also, is, is there, is this something that you want people to go up to because there's going to be information there for them, or is this something that needs to be secluded and you don't want people around it, on it, by it?
That's a good, that's a good question. And I, that's where I would actually be interested in the city of Bellevue's input, because we could go either way, right? The station that we have in, on the Elkhorn, it's relatively small. As you can see from the illustration, it's only about 100 square feet. It's relatively small. We could easily add another 100 square feet for interpretive kind of information, or signage, or, or information that would be relative to the public. We could do that. So we could kind of go either way. We could have it where it was more of a, not really, I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to over, over express the point. Wouldn't really be museum-ish, but it would be more like a field station where there would be some interaction with the community. We can do that. Or it could also be a field station, very similar to a USGS gauging station, where it's not really designed that way. And that would be something that we could certainly have a dialogue about. Not necessarily today, but when we're putting together, I would, I would presume that the city of Bellevue would enter into a contractual agreement with UNO so that we both understood the, what we were getting ourselves into. And in that, during those conversations or that dialogue, that would be the time when we could approach those kind of questions, of whether you would want to have something that would be a little bit more interactive, or something that would be a little bit more effectively distant from the community.
Are you bringing students down there weekly or monthly, or how?
It would, what we're doing on the, the best, the best way for me to express that would be to put it in the, put it under the guise of what we do at the Elkhorn Station. At the Elkhorn Station, our primary time when we're most interested is the time when there is a spring runoff, starting in about a month, once the water gets warmer. During the spring runoff, when we would be making measurements, we're out there virtually daily. A small group of students doing effectively research. I've also talked to the USGS. It would be very possible that we could have water quality monitoring onsite, right at the station. That would be continuous. It would be continuous and also be uploadable to a website. So if, if citizens were interested in looking at temperature, pH, conductivity, whatever their nitrates in the, in the Missouri River water, they'd be able to have access. Again, very similar to a USGS gauging station kind of thing. The, I think I've answered your question.
You have. A couple more.
No, that's fine.
And you sort of touched on it, downloading it to a website. I'm just trying to figure out what information would we get from it for the citizens of Bellevue? I mean, is it something that would be beneficial if you're identifying maybe contamination, or let's say Omaha, through whatever reason, where the sewage is coming into the river? I mean, that might be some, maybe you're taking some tests that would be very valuable for us to let our citizens know. Maybe you don't want to jump in the river for the next week or two and, and two, or something.
Absolutely.
So is there stuff that we would get from you, or we could direct people to, that would be very easy to see, say, current information on maybe the conditions, or whatever your, the temperature, or whatever your agent-
Yes. The, the short answer to that is yes. The Elkhorn Station does not have that capability right now because that wasn't initially designed into the plans. But it is, I can speak for the University of Nebraska system who's funding this project. It is designed into the plans for this station. So there would be effectively the equivalent of a USGS gauging station kind of information, discharge, flow, pH, temperature, conductivity, turbidity, those kind of measurements, nitrate, those measurements would be made there, would be put on a website that would be accessible for the citizens of Bellevue, and, and for everyone, everyone else for that matter.
And one more thing.
Sure.
I don't know what costs are, are put into this, but, and I'm sure that as you deal with the Parks Department of Public Works and maybe try to identify, I know you said under the bridge, but maybe there's a better location for it. If for some reason the city down the road would want it moved or relocated, or I, I guess my concern is, is how much money are you putting into it? And if the city would reasonably say, hey, in 90 days could be relocated or move it, is that doable, or is that something that, that we'd want to definitely stay away from?
The dollar value, I, I can, I can give you, again, from my experience with the Elkhorn River Station, we're looking at somewhere probably between 250 and 350,000. So it's, it's, in order to have it completely, the, the, in the, the illustration that you have, one of the major expenses, and, and it would certainly depend on how it was configured at the, on the Missouri, but one of the major expenses is that ADA level ramp, right? That's about one-third of the cost right there. So depending on where we put it and how it was configured, and we'd certainly work with, with engineers and architects to figure out, figure out exactly how that would be done, but it would, that would kind of really vary the, vary the cost. But it is more or less a, I wouldn't say permanent, but certainly a semi-permanent, permanent structure.
And you answered my question. It's something that we don't want to have to move. We want to put it in a right location.
Exactly. That's exactly right. And, and the only reason, or the, as a novice driving around in Bellevue, it seemed like the optimal place for it to go. But I could certainly work with Jeff or anyone else if there's an other air, other places where we would put it that perhaps might be a little, a little more secure, or a little more secluded, or-
What I was thinking of.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're gonna have people down there, we're gonna want the public down there, then maybe we want to put it in more open space with maybe some lighting.
Sure.
Versus if it's secluded and you don't want people on it, and that was I, sort of was getting to, but obviously if you're talking 250, $300,000, it's something we probably don't want to try to move every couple of years.
Right, right.
It probably needs to be there for many years.
Yeah, I would-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Blood?
So for clarification, student-driven organization, and I don't know if Councilman Cook's aware of this, but they're actually nationally known for this program. This program's not going to go away. The Omaha metro area should be thrilled that we have such a fine organization within the University of Nebraska, Omaha. So anything that they want to put there, I would support 100%. And it's going to be a quality location for them. And I don't know why they'd want to move it, because that's going to mess with the science of it. If you, it, it might, not to speak on your behalf, but I understand science. And so if they're doing statistics, they need it where they need it, and hopefully we'll consider that when we talk about locating it and, and doing the contract. But we have to, to keep in mind that the science will change if they move locations, and then that messes with their statistics and their information. So I, I hope that we, we do find ways to combine it. We have a very active scout community. I can see our area scouts most definitely taking care of it, both girl scouts and boy scouts. And I know you need more females in your program. So I, I just want to say, we're pretty lucky to be getting them. And the fact that they're willing to share information with us is, is remarkable, and it's just another nice thing that's going to come into Bellevue. And we'll bring people through Old Town that hopefully will stop and eat, and kind of a neat thing.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I like the concept. I appreciate that you're here. I would just suggest that it be in a more accessible area, so we could have some of the education materials, so more people from Bellevue who came down could learn from it, could get access, could know to even look on the internet and get more information. I'd like it to be as interactive as we could do it, so that it can benefit the people in Bellevue. So under the bridge may not be the best place, but if it can be part of more educational programs, I think that would be all the better for our community and for the larger community.
We are, I'd just like to add, we are working right now with a number of the different K-12 schools, middle schools, particularly in Omaha, middle schools, high schools, both going out to the station and also doing other things in the city of Omaha relative to water quality issues. And I'm actually delighted that you just said that, because as I said before, the location was really kind of an emphasis on the, the seclusion in, in the event that, that the city of Bellevue wasn't particularly interested in an interaction with the community. But to interact with the community, that's part of the mission of what our students are looking for. So I think that, that would be absolutely wonderful. So thank you for that.
Mr. Carmichael?
Doctor, thank you for coming and doing this today. I think this is really important. I've heard several trains of thought. Is this primarily for educational?
It's, yes, but if you were to also say, is it primarily for research, I would say yes there too. I, it, and I don't mean to be evasive, but it's really, it's a, it's a scientific research station that would be open at least periodically to the public for community engagement. Let's, let's put it that way.
So primarily during high water events, it's going to be a restricted access for scientific or research applications, and then during low, low water or normal flow activities?
I would say, I would put it more in the perspective of if we had, for, let me give you an example. On Thompson Creek, Thompson Creek is a very small tributary of Papillion Creek that runs through La Vista. We're doing a, we're gonna do, be doing a similar thing there. Now, there, obviously the river's much, much smaller. But it's, it's actually, I mean, you can practically jump across it. It's very small. But what we're doing there is we're putting together a number of different community events. So if we had a community event, for example, they're doing what they're calling the La Vista Bio Blitz, which is going to happen this spring, where we're going to have scientists come to the, come to the creek and effectively look at all the fish and the frogs and the snakes and the, the insects, and, and basically do a, a animal survey of the area. If something like that was to happen here, then it wouldn't matter, excuse me, it wouldn't matter what time of year it is, we would do it then. It's not that we would exclude people at different times of year. It would be more related to when we had programs, when there were education or educational or community engagement programs, we would, we would run those. It's not as if the two would have to really be distinct from each other. And in fact, we would, we would, when we had, let's say, our graduate students there, we would happily open the door, they could walk right in, see what we're doing, you know, see the animals, see the flow-through system. They're, they're more than welcome to that. It doesn't have to be either or, where when there's research, you close the door, and when there's no research, you can open the door. Doesn't have to be like that.
And this is really primarily an evaluation of the health of the, of the ecosystem, is it?
Yeah. What we're, what we're really interested in is, as, as you know, what's, what is happening now is with global climate change, precipitation in the mountains is, is varying from year to year enormously. And what happens is, like what happened back in, what, 2011, 2012- And what happens is, like what happened back in, what, 2011, 2012, where there's so much snow, they can't hold it all back, so we wind up in a flood condition. Now, look at the plat in the last two years, it's been virtually dry. So we're having these very large oscillations in water quantity within our river systems. How does that influence water quality? And also, how do those water quality issues influence the potential? I'm not saying there is a problem, but there, a potential for there to be problems relative to community health, right? I mean, we all know that the Omaha, one of the two Omaha wastewater treatment plants is upstream from Hayworth Park. Well, we're going to be able to, and also with the combined sewage overflow, we're going to be able to see those kind of contaminants in the water, should they be there. And the question then is, what happens relative to high-water conditions or low-water conditions? Is it worse? Is it better? Do they change at all? Is it an issue that Omaha should be concerned about? Or is it not? And it's, we're going to be able to be, we're going to be able to be part of that conversation. And not only that, but we're going to allow the citizens of Omaha and Bellevue to access our website. We're not advocating for either side. We're just going to show information. We're just going to have data. And let them look at the data, let them interpret it. And in fact, I also run a citizen-science group where we don't just let them interpret it, we actually let them go out and make the measurements themselves, right? Do, make measurements of water quality. So it's a long-winded answer to your question, but there's a number of different ways that the station could interdigitate with the community.
Two last questions. You had stipulated in your opening statement that you had worked with representatives of the Corps of Engineers. Will you be required to provide a no-rise certification? And if so, in the event of a high-water event, are there plans to remove the structure to preserve the $300,000 you're going to invest in it?
The two questions, yes, we will do it. We will have a no-rise certificate, just like what we did on the Elkhorn. We have one there as well. And right now, I don't know the best way to move forward, given the location that we would be in. For example, the Elkhorn Station, again, is on stilts. It's above the 100-year floodplain. So we're effectively out of the way, should any unusual or relatively infrequent flooding occur on the river. Is that the best model for the Missouri? I don't know. But that's why I would consult with my colleagues at the NRD and the USGS and Corps of Engineers, so we would know what the best answer to that question would be.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other, Mr. Knudsen?
I was just going to tell you, I work for MUD full-time. And I used to work at the treatment plant up north. It'd be interesting to have something like this down in Bellevue, so that we could, actually, I'd say that'd probably be one of the main websites that we'd go to. And you'd be able to see some of the things that are coming down the river, and how we treat the water and stuff.
Thank you.
I know they're talking more and more about doing recharge off of wastewater treatment plants, and how they treat those. And I think that'd be something that'd be very beneficial to us down the road.
Particularly with the billion dollars plus that Omaha's going to have to spend on CSO issue, it would be nice to know whether or not they're actually getting their money's worth from it.
Yep.
Councilman Blood?
So Jeff, you're looking for what from us?
Basically, this is just for information.
Make sure that we're all on board if you were to move forward with the city.
All they're asking is just some real estate to place it on. When we're talking about the bridge, the location I'm looking at is actually just south of the bridge, just a little bit. Since we do have 24/7 manpower at the toll bridge, I thought this way we'd have some eyes on it, even though they wouldn't be required to actually monitor it. But if something funny did happen down there, we would have some quick response.
That's what I was going to say, Jeff. I mean, this would be an ideal situation. I know we've talked about placing some cameras down in that area, and that'd be probably an ideal one to, for security down there.
Yep. That's another thought I had, was cameras, the lighting, you know, all that stuff. We've taken a lot into consideration on this, to make sure that there's no vandalism. We can protect it the best we can. We've had long dialogues about this.
Just, I'd also like to just relay our experience with the Elkhorn River Station. At the Elkhorn River Station, what we now have are motion detector floodlights and cameras, and security cameras. And it's no big surprise, but once we put up the floodlights and the security cameras, vandalism went to absolute zero.
Mr. Sullivan?
I was just going to mention, if you continue to pursue the area underneath the bridge, we do have a fairly large easement that we've granted to the Bellevue Bridge Commission. So we probably need to visit with Bellevue Bridge Commission, too.
Okay.
Are there any, Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah. And the other thing that was noted by the doctor, there clearly would be a contract between UNO and the city. So addressing the location, potentially the easement issue, those points would be laid out. So we're comfortable with it, also able to meet any requirements and needs that they have. So that would come back to the council.
Are there any other questions from the council? We see none. Thank you, Dr. Colick. Look forward to working with you.
I do too, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in and talk to you all today. Thanks.
Welcome. Thank you. Takes us to item 3B, Al Pravandra, status update on public safety building.
Good afternoon. Maybe just an executive summary recap. The project originally was supposed to be completed about now. And my impression of the situation is the contractor's probably going to be completed in about two months. And, you know, we've been focusing, our firm's been focusing on, in addition to the construction administration, to a lot of the peripheral things, and you're going to hear some of it today on the furniture side. I think we've awarded three of the four furniture contracts. And I think the last package that we have is the signage and graphic contract is coming up in front of you today also. Most of those, in fact, I think all of those, as an aggregate, came in below our estimate, at least a little bit. Some of them more than that. From a financial perspective, again, looking at the big picture, when we got the bids in, we looked at the project budget, and we said that the project was going to be about a million under our estimate, our firm's estimate. And as time has gone, we've had a lot of challenges with the existing building. There were a lot of enhancements to the existing building. I think as the departments got into the final outfitting of the project, as far as audiovisual and data outlets, coordinating with furniture, et cetera, we've made some adjustments there. But generally, we're still, if you consider everything within the property line, we're still in that million-dollar below estimate category. The only thing that's kind of pushing us outside of that is the fiber optics link back to this facility. It was never in our project budget, and as time, originally, I think we were, I was talking to Mr. Betts, we were talking about having that connection made through the school systems, bringing fiber up close to the site, et cetera. But I think you ended up getting fiber as a standalone project, which I think is going back against the project budget. And I think that, I think it was, what, $160,000 or something like that? Well, that's a, you know, a pretty good hit for that. But other than that, and that may take the project budget from, you know, being a million under to 900,000 under. But we have current issues. We are having discussions, kind of like the Ukraine, and Russia, and United States, over the floor flatness issue, and the subcontractor putting in the flooring. And we're working through that. The general contractor, on his own dime, got a surveyor to come in and survey the floor flatness, and I think it turned out to be a lot better than the flooring subcontractor thought. So we're working through that. And, you know, I think it's going to be a great facility. You know, it's about 68,000 square feet of space for the police department and the other three departments moving in there. And that's a broad brush overview, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Obviously, it is at the point where, you know, I'm sure many of you have maybe just informally walked through, it is definitely into the high-finish stage. I think one of my hopes is that the, some of the subcontractors manage it a little better. We get more bodies in there to do the final finishing. But other than that, I think it's going to finish out to be a pretty good facility. Another challenge that the contractors had is with basically the concrete subcontractor, and that is kind of one of the reasons the schedule is behind 30 to 60 days, the fact that because of the frost in the ground up to this point in time, they weren't unable to pour the back of that, the north side of that facility before winter hit. And they're going to have to catch up with that.
Councilman Blood?
Mayor, I just, this isn't for allies. I just want everybody to know that the Bellevue Police Citizens Advisory Council is going to provide a tour this Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00. The public is welcome to. If you want additional information, go to BellevuePAC.org. The Police Citizens Advisory Council meets every other month, and it's open to the public. But this always seems to be the most interesting part of PAC to a lot of the people that don't usually attend. Though, we do encourage people that have maybe special needs and can't do stairs to maybe pass until the elevators are working, but otherwise, all are welcome. And they're welcome as well. But we always like to give people the heads-up that can be a little bit more difficult for those that can't do stairs.
Thank you. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Al, I just want to say thanks. To come in with all the add-ons, with all the additional wiring, with the things that we chose to do to enhance the building and still be close to a million-under budget is pretty impressive. And to get this quality of building, and this quality that will serve our police department for probably the next 50 years, because I don't know when we're going to have a council that's got the wherewithal to spend that kind of money again. If we were to build a new building this size, I'm guessing we would be hard-pressed to do it for under 50 million.
Well, I don't know about 50 million, but it certainly would be probably, I'd say, a third to a half more, a dollar-wise. I think, as I recall, the original study had it, including land acquisition, you know, pushing 15 to 20 million. So...
And that was over 10 years ago.
Right. And now you're looking at, you know, again, we're trying to cap our budget approximately 8 million total. And that's the whole shebang with the fees and furnishings, et cetera. I'd like to take credit for that, Mr. Preister. But I think one of the biggest things that happened was that the project was bid in a good bidding climate. And I think we were all careful as, not only consultants, but as users, to try to come up with a scheme that was cost-effective. So it was trying to be modest with what we were doing, and to a certain extent, and also to take advantage of the good bidding climate.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah. The only thing I would add, Al mentioned a little bit of the issue with the concrete work. That also even ties in a little bit with the resealing or surfacing of the parking lot, due to the timing, correct? Getting everything done, so we can go in at the right time and do it.
Right. Just finishing out the whole parking lot is tied to the fact that we didn't get the back, the north part, finished either. So, yeah, it's all kind of related. But again, you know, I'm still hopeful that the first part of May, you know, you're going to be doing some move-ins with the departments.
The only thing I would add, that speaking of the departments, what will be moving there, which obviously will be the police, planning, permits and inspections, code enforcement. Those groups, we have met and have been developing, and might say, delineating a moving plan to, so when the facility is substantially complete and we can begin actually moving, we're getting a game plan in place. I think that's coming together pretty well. So we're also preparing for that relocation.
Any other questions from the council? See none. Thank you, Mr. Pravonda. I look forward to my tour on Thursday evening, 7:00 PM.
I hope you enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to item number four, review and discussion without action of items on the agenda of the regular council meeting this evening at 6:00 PM. Begin with item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Approval of consent agenda. C, approval of minutes of the February 24th, 2014 regular and pre-council city council meeting. D, acknowledged receipt of the minutes of the 2/19/14 meeting of the Board of Adjustment. Four, approval of claims. Five, special presentations, none. Six, liquor license. Mudbugs LLC, we do business as mudbugs. Seven, ordinance for adoption to third reading. Councilman Blood?
On 7A, I'm going to request that we put that on the back burner for a couple of weeks. So we can have further discussion with the area garages, automotive repair service garages here in Old Town. I think there's a little bit of tweaking that needs to be done on that ordinance. And I know for a fact that several council members, myself included, have been working on this. So we're hoping we can bring forward something different that I think will be a better match.
Any other questions on 7A, ordinance 3757? E, ordinance 3758, Mr. Carmichael? No? C, ordinance 3747, Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. We've come a long way on this, and at least Councilman Carmichael and I are pretty much in agreement on some of the amendments. But I don't know that the public or other people have had a chance to really digest some things that have come in recently. So even though we're pretty much there, tonight I'm going to ask that we carry it over to the next meeting, just so. And we've got a tree board meeting tomorrow. I'd like to get some feedback there, too. So I think we're almost there. Hopefully, if we're there, we're good. But just to finalize it, we've come this far, might as well finish it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing. 8A, ordinance number 3759. B, 3760. Takes us to item number nine, ordinance... My screen just went blank. Nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. 9A, ordinance number 3761, Mr. Carmichael?
Chris, if you could, please. I noticed in the amendments for setback, you specified that that setback is now from the eve rather than the exterior wall. And my question isn't so much whether that's a good or bad thing, is are we doing that for all buildings? For the principal structures on the property, or strictly for accessory structures?
The, the way it's written, the, we're allowing two feet of the eve, or not counting two feet of the eve as far as the square footage, and we're tying the ordinance to, or the accessory building to a maximum size square footage. So we are, we're allowing, like I said, two feet of that eve not to count as far as the square footage. If it's, if you have like a 10-foot eve that was an overhang for, you know, maybe doing a carport or something, that would count as part of the square footage of the structure, other than, you know, the two feet around that. For a, for a house, or a regular principal structure on the building, an eve is allowed to extend into a required yard, one-third of that, one-third of that required yard. So if you've got a 10-foot side yard, an eve can go into that side yard, three feet, three and a third feet. So it, I'll say, it's similar. Some of that eve can go into a yard, or it doesn't count as far as the square footage.
Okay. I guess my question, maybe I wasn't clear. The way I read what you had proposed was that the end of the eve is where the setback requirement is going to be met now, rather than the exterior wall. I don't believe the building code provisions have changed for the ability for a projection to go into a required yard for fire resistivity. My concern is that we're going to hold an accessory structure to a different set of standards than we would any other building, as far as the eve or the projection goes for setback requirements.
Two feet... I don't know if I have the right answer for you right now, if we can, you know...
Yeah. I mean, if I have a two-foot eve in my garage, and we have a three-foot setback for a garage right now from a property, now I have to be five-foot setback. That's what I'm... what I'm talking about. Not to the exterior wall, to the end of the eve. Whereas a house can be five-foot with a two-foot eve, and that's okay. That's my question.
The ordinance is really dealing with square footage of the building, as far as how big of a structure you can have on a regular lot. It's not as simple as, but up to seven hundred and fifty square feet. We don't count two feet of that eve in that seven hundred and fifty square feet. As far as a setback, you can have an accessory structure that is less than fifteen feet high, would have a five-foot side yard setback and a five-foot rear yard setback. That eve can go one-third of the distance into that I think we're talking two different things here. No?
Mayor?
Okay.
Councilman Blood?
I was just gonna suggest that this be spoken about outside of pre-council. It's only the first reading, and there's plenty of time for discussion.
Are there any other questions on ordinance number three seven six one? Nine B, ordinance number three seven six two. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had asked Chris if he would check on a couple things on this. I support the concept. We have a forty-foot setback for residents, which I understand people don't want the horses close to their house. But we also have a twenty-foot setback from the property line. Many of these acreages join each other, both have horses, and we effectively take forty feet of a person's property and say, "You can't use it." We've essentially kept them from grazing or having the horses in that area, even though it's zoned and it's set that they could. So, I'm suggesting that since they can't be any closer to the house, we've already got that setback, that we at least reduce that to ten feet from the property line. Or, if they both agree, and both have no problem, both property owners adjoining the property line fence, that they can just have the horses come right up to the fence, or however they want to do it. So, I just asking to look into that, and also there's a twenty thousand square foot requirement for any additional horse. Now, if you've only got an acre, you can't feed a horse on an acre. So, you're gonna have to buy hay anyway, and the house and the barn and everything else is on that lot. So, I'm not sure if twenty thousand square additional feet has a basis in any fact, but I also asked Chris if he would check on that. And I'm thinking it probably doesn't have to be quite that large either. So, hopefully, by the next council meeting, we can get some information with some science. And I understand these things were just set with no basis for anything with horses or property years and years and years ago. So, I'm just asking that when we do this, we have some more information, and we respect the property And I don't think you have any answers to that yet.
Just, I'll express my concerns in a memo to you, and I put that back in the email. You did say that they were set with no basis. I'm not sure if that's the case.
Okay.
They are what we've had for a long time. When those, they may have discussed things with the Humane Society at that time, and come up with the twenty thousand or the setbacks. But I don't know if they were done with no basis or not. I'm not sure how they were determined.
And I would stand corrected. I meant no basis from horse husbandry, but maybe there is.
I don't know.
So, we'll find out.
Mr. Knidson?
I'm sorry, but I disagree with you as far as dropping the distance between the fences and allowing agreements between homeowners, because that homeowner can change at any time. And then they'd have to have another agreement, and if the other person didn't agree to that, then they've got to move their fences back, and most of them won't do that either. So, I just see problems coming up with that. And I think, you know, if you've got an acreage where you don't have horses and your neighbor does, keeping it twenty feet back from the lot line, I think makes sense, because that way you don't have them coming in towards your area there. I mean, that's just my feeling.
Are there any other questions? Move on to item nine C, ordinance number three seven six three, Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mayor. When I, just to give you, when I saw this on the agenda, Randy Bennett's here, and Mary Hawkins is not here, but I talked to both of them, and I was somewhat concerned had this gone to the Civil Service Commission for their input in the sense of an agenda item and a vote. And I had conversations with Randy yesterday, and he had, what I believe would be a fair thing, is that it was not ever like an agenda item recently where you guys discussed it to vote it, and to then push it forward to us. And Mary Hawkins also had the same concern, and I don't know, I just printed this off this morning. Mary, I think, got a copy of it. I don't know if it was distributed to all members of the council yet, but she would also like to have this brought back to the Merrick Commission. And they are having a meeting on March eighteenth, and Randy didn't see an issue with that. So, I would like to delay this, or at least until our next meeting, because I, instead of having a first reading tonight, the reason why I'd like to delay it, because I think it's very critical to understand their position, and how we would move forward to it, because I don't want to get back into what happened a year ago, to where there was several months of wrangling, and there's another issue on our agenda that would also tie into this also. So, Randy, do you want to, I would ask if Randy would have something to say, if we would allow him?
No, other than, than I think that, you know, waiting till the eighteenth, and letting the Civil Service Commission take a look at the ordinance, see how it conflicts with our current rules and regulations, and coming to terms with that before you do this, especially since you want to waive the second and third reading, I think it would be appropriate on this.
So, I guess the bottom line is, I would, if I need to make a motion later, I will, but I would ask that we delay it until our twenty-fourth meeting.
Mr. Sullivan?
My suggestion would be is that you could go ahead with the first reading. I don't know why that would have necessarily any effect. If they choose not to waive, you're still gonna have a second reading, and amendments can be made at that time as well. So, it is somewhat critical that this matter moves forward one way or another.
I still think to get their position before we start moving forward. I mean, I'll make a motion. If it doesn't move forward, that's fine. I just would like to get their input on how they feel, you know, look at this ordinance, the proposal, versus what is already on the books, have them make a vote on it, and then move that forward as a package, versus not. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Carmichael?
I'm kind of in concurrence with Mr. Sullivan's opinion. If we don't do second and third reading tonight, that still moves it forward to a public discussion at a second reading. It gives the Civil Service Commission ample time to have a meeting and evaluate the ordinance, because this is critical. I mean, there's a lot of things in this that potentially change, or maybe even conflict with state law, that I'm not comfortable with. So, I would probably vote to proceed on to the second reading, rather than waive all three at this point in time.
Mr. Preister?
And I would think that would accomplish both. So, we're still moving ahead, but we're open to the public hearing, and we're getting feedback, we're getting the Public Service Commission. So, I think that meets all of the needs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Questions on nine C. Move on to ten, none, eleven resolutions. Eleven A, resolution twenty fourteen dash six, dissolution of dock board and release of restrictions of monies associated with dock board. Mr. Preister?
Mayor, just a question of Mr. Severson on the money. I think it's a good idea that we eliminate it, but my concern is, we've got this money that's sitting there, that it proposes to put in the general fund. I'd much rather see that go in the parks fund and stay where it was generated, and we've got a lot of expense and a lot of things down on the river to improve the parks. I'd like to earmark it for there, and just wondered your thoughts, or if you have any problems with that.
Not an issue there. Parks is part of the general fund.
Right.
And I would like to clarify that we're not going to restrict it like we do the park funds that we get from the SIDS or anything, but this would go into the unrestricted amounts in the park fund for their general expenditures.
Okay, so we could put it in the park fund?
Yeah, no issue with that.
Good. That would be my preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Severson.
I was gonna say, if somebody would include that in the motion at the meeting, that'd be great.
Can do that.
Takes us to item number twelve, current business. Twelve A, acknowledge the nomination of the following for appointment to the CDBG committee. B, acknowledge the nomination of the following to the tree board. C, request permission to seek competitive bids for firefighter turnout gear. D, acceptance of low bid of Nebraska Furniture Mark in the amount of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-three and eighty-three cents for the supply and installation of multi-television monitors for the public safety building. E, acceptance of low bid of Concept AV integration of Omaha in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, for the supply and installation of multi- and audio/video system for the public safety building. F, acceptance of low bid of metal logos in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents for the interior signage for the public safety building. G, reject original award of bid to AOI and accept second lowest bid of payless office furniture in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars for the furniture package D for the public safety building. H, approve supplemental furniture order for payless office furniture in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents for the public safety building. I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for trail construction to connect Southwest Bellevue to the Keystone Trail. J, approve and accept twenty thirteen SAFER grant in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars to pay salaries and benefits for additional twelve firefighters for two years. K, continued discussion on street lighting standards and direction to Planning Department. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I handed out a couple of sheets of paper that you might look at on your table. It talks about lighting and lighting standards, and information that I think may be useful as we look at doing this. So, I won't go into detail now, but I think the first page on the colored picture is pretty descriptive, where we often think more light is better. More light sometimes creates more shadows and creates more problems. So, we want focused light, we want efficient light, and I think we're all in agreement. That's the best thing to have on our streets in our community. So, we'll have the discussion tonight, but I wanted to point out that information to you.
Twelve L, adopt the Audit Committee charter and approve appointment of Paul Cook for one-year term, Jerry Blasik and Dave Sanborn for two-year term. See no other questions or discussion. Takes us back to the pre-council agenda. Councilman Blood?
Mayor, I know the next item on our agenda is the executive session, and I would ask that the council consider not discussing the E-911 negotiations in executive session. As far as I'm concerned, we're not in contract negotiations, that this is informative of nature, by nature, information we should have received prior to today. I don't think it needs to be discussed behind a closed door.
Mr. Burlowitz?
I do have information to hand out to you that I just received, so I will give that to you, so you have that in advance of potentially the next meeting at that point.
Again, what would be the purpose of us taking this to executive session? I think we really need to be cautious what we take behind closed doors. We've got a lot of citizens concerned about this issue, because information has not been shared publicly, nor with the council in many cases. This is just an important issue that, right now, I think should still be done in a public forum. We're not signing any contracts, we're not negotiating anything right now, and if we are, then this is news to me. And I think we should discuss it in a public forum. And of course, it's up to the council to vote in either way, the fashion they choose, but should this be discussed during executive session, I'm gonna let you know upfront that I'm gonna leave during that part of the executive session.
Okay, well, I would not argue whether you discuss it in executive session or not. There are still a certain degree of negotiations that would be going on. There's obviously been a lot of newspaper articles, so you may know as much or more than I'd be briefing you in executive session already. I did, this week, receive some information that I'd made copies of, which I don't have marked confidential. And so, I'd be more, my intent was to disseminate that to the council. Some of it is a draft interlocal agreement that reflects some of the executive session discussions previously, on what the agreement might entail, some of the key issues. And then there also is a synopsis that explains the proposed interlocal, as well as history behind how we even got to this interlocal with the studies that were done, and that's all public information. So, a lot of which you would have been receiving would have already been probably newspaper articles. There was one element of potential discussion that's not in this information, that really hasn't went beyond some initial discussion by some other local governmental entities that I probably, if I were going to bring that up, it would need to be in executive session, because that's never been part of the negotiations to this point. But it isn't that far to even be deemed another option. So, I'll just, I guess what I'm saying is, there's been some discussions by some of the other cities, potentially with the county, that may or may not have been in newspaper articles or general information, but that hasn't moved any further. So, at this point, it would be kind of irrelevant to even bring that up, so...
So, what you're telling me, and what I'm hearing, is really it's not necessary to take an executive session?
Yeah, that's why I said I would not argue the point for executive session. My whole point...
And I think we have to be really cautious with this. We've been through this before, and we've been taken to task for this before. There are certain things that need to be discussed in the open, and this is one of them, because this affects all of our citizens. And we're not getting ready to sign a contract, to my knowledge. So, I would just ask the council to consider that we discuss that part of the information during pre-council now, not in executive session. But again, I can only vote for myself and speak for myself.
I have no problem with handing out the information. My whole point really was to get the information in your hands. Like I said, obviously, there's been a number of different articles that have covered a number of different potential elements as to how the E-911 would maybe go forward. Obviously, this week in the leader, there was an article on the Matrix study that came out, and that was commissioned by the county commissioners, which was subsequent to the UNO Public Affairs Department study that was done to begin with back in two thousand and twelve, I think it was. I kind of like have a chronology of events. So, the only thing at some point would be if there were some elements of an interlocal that were semi-negotiation elements. It could be anything as far as negotiating percentages of the costs that the cities might bear versus what they currently do. So, there are some elements that may or may not. But at this point, I don't see anything that's of a salient issue that would necessarily require executive session. Again, it still falls into the area of negotiation zone. That's the only reason why I put it on for exec session.
Councilman Blood?
So, Pat, how would we handle this if indeed we chose not to discuss it during executive session? Can we discuss it during pre-councils, and it is on the agenda, just not under...
It's not on the agenda as an executive, as a regular agenda item.
For pre-council, I mean.
For pre-council. So, therefore...
The only way we could discuss it would be under executive session.
Right.
Unless of course we postponed it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we could always put it on the agenda for the next meeting, certainly.
And my whole point on... And my whole point on that initially, again, I wanted to get the information in your hands. Obviously, you've asked for information, so I've tried to pull together information from what I've received. I can tell you, there's been no subsequent meetings that I or the mayor have attended since the very last meeting I briefed you on. So, other than what's been in the newspaper and some email documents that I've received as part of communications between the cities and the county, that's really about all I can provide. But the intent really is to provide you with the amount of information that I have available to put into your hands.
So, just, I'm trying to get it clear in my head here. So, was my understanding that there's several councils already voting to move forward on this exploratory-wise? But we weren't in on any of those meetings that got them to that point?
Let's put it this way, at this point, I don't think any of them are actually having on agendas to vote on them. There have been meetings, and since it's on the agenda, I don't want to go too far, but there were meetings of elected officials early on, which led to subcommittee meetings, which led to meetings of city managers to come up and present options to the mayors. Those have all been meetings that we've been reported on in terms of the very options. Do nothing, go partway, or go with a totally unified, single communication center, which you've all been briefed on in terms of what the studies recommended. So, there's nothing on the agenda, obviously, tonight for you to act on.
Right.
I did indicate in a newspaper article that there might be something to bring forward to you on the 24th. Again, that all depends on currently what the committee, county's position is in regard to a draft interlocal. A lot of it has to do with the double taxation issue, a lot of it has to do with cost savings issue elements, which you're well aware of. A lot of it has to do with the double taxation issue. So, there's all those various criteria. Now, come the 24th, whether the other cities will have moved ahead and voted on it, I can't tell you whether they are or they won't. They all mentioned the possibility. There is a concern that this continue to move forward and doesn't basically just start spinning its wheels. So, that way, ultimately, there'll be a decision for the cities and the county to make as to what direction are we going and what's that direction going to be.
And so, Pat, pre-council, I mean, if you go way back to all the confusion when we found out pre-council going, the purpose is just discussion and not to make any decisions. So, if we, it's on our agenda as a discussion item only under executive session, so we can't just remove it from our motion to discuss it in executive session to discuss it anyway?
No, because it hasn't alerted the public that it may be discussed as an open discussion item.
Okay, well, is the main reason that I want to take it out executive session, so.
Again, I will provide you, and like I said, this information is not marked confidential, okay? Obviously, it's not something I want you running to the media with because there's a variety of it still that are being reviewed. But I had a complete, you might say, history synopsis of an interlocal, which you all read about, an interlocal agreement was submitted to the county here recently for them to consider, which again, covers all the key elements and issues that have already been mentioned previously. So, it's not new science, not rocket science. It's just, at this point, trying to move it forward. So, I will provide you, well, handout yet this afternoon, so that way you'll have that to review. My real intent was to get it into your hands, so that way, if come the 24th, we're looked upon as, i.e. a city, you the city council, to make some decision, possibly. May choose not to. At least you have all the information that you would need going forward.
But again, we can do that without discussing it in a private forum.
Yeah, I just, in case there were some questions that could become a little more sensitive that you might ask, that was one of the key reasons for being in exec session on that. Not necessarily the information, but not knowing what questions you might have that could maybe put me in a situation where I don't want to speak on behalf of the county or the other city governments involved either.
Well, and I think the logical answer is exactly what you just said. If we have questions of that nature, you can say that again in a public forum.
And I guess probably, once you do review it, if you have questions, no similar difference than when you get the administrator's report or any agenda items between now and the 24th, they would probably be helpful if you shoot those questions to me. So, that way, allows staff to be prepared or allows me to find that information if, in fact, it's beyond what I have available for you.
Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Blood?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the protection of the public interest. I move to go into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations, contract negotiations in reference to solid waste contract, contract negotiations in reference to janitorial services, potential litigation by the city, and threat of litigation.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now 2:46. We will go into executive session where our discussion will be restricted to what was stated by Councilwoman Blood. Thank you. 10/2014. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening, and I also like to welcome the UNO Journalism Club or class that's here this evening, welcome. And if you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Associate Minister Brian Henkens, Aldersgate United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We bow your heads and add you to prayer, please. Almighty God, send down upon those who will office in the city of Bellevue the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. You have so linked our lives one with another that all we do affects, for good or ill, all other lives. So, guide them in the work they do, that they may do it not for self alone, but for the common good, and make us mindful of the rightful aspirations of others through Jesus Christ, our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Henkens. Item 2, Kay, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael?
Here.
Mrs. Santeuk? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knutson?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, posted the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda, Councilwoman Blood?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
3B, approval of consent agenda, Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3C and D is under consent. Item 4 is also under consent. 5, there is none. 6, liquor license. 6A, Mudbugs LLC doing business as Mudbugs. Application for a Class L craft brewery liquor license at 101 West Mission Avenue and for Steve C. Purdy as manager of the license. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Is anyone here from Mudbugs?
Hi, Mr. Purdy.
Thank you. Please sign in. You can even turn that microphone so it faces forward. I appreciate it, thank you. I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to recommend approval to Nebraska Liquor Commission for Mudbugs and their application for a Class L craft brewery liquor license at 101 West Mission Avenue and for Steve Purdy as manager of the license, and welcome to Bellevue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy. Item 7, ordinance for adoption, third reading. 7A, ordinance number 3757. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3757, an ordinance to amend section 2.04, ordinance number 3619, the Bellevue zoning ordinance, regarding the definition of automotive repair services. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Mayor. With the council's consent, I'd like to have this opened up for some public discussion. We've got several members of the audience who, I believe, may want to speak to this issue.
I'll second it. We have a second, Mr. Just, should we have a discussion? Okay, we have a second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, Carol Blood, Councilwoman Blood?
Before we vote, and I'm not against public comment, it was discussed at pre-council that we are taking this off the table for tonight. We're not voting on it, and it's not going to be put back on the agenda until the 14th, so we have time to further discuss it with our area garages and to make sure that everybody's in agreement that we're doing it in the correct fashion. So, I just want to point that out before we go to public comment.
Mr. Carmichael, could you make a comment?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor. The origin of this ordinance was primarily because marine sales and repair was taken out of the previous zoning designation as a permitted use. In discussing this with Mr. Grasso, who owns the boat shop across the street, I requested that we propose that that be included back into the principal permitted uses for the zone. In doing so, a timeframe was added in that's caused all this confusion. 14 days for vehicles to be stored on the property, and I think that's what we need, as a council, need to address. It's not the use that's the problem in my eyes. It's the minimal time that these vehicles are allowed to remain on property. There are several provisions that I've found out since this ordinance came on for first reading. For example, it takes 90 days to apply for a title, and then it takes 30 days after that to actually get the title. So, you could conceivably have a vehicle sitting on your property for 120 days as collateral for money spent or money expended that wasn't paid by the owner of a vehicle. There's a lot of dynamics that come into play all of a sudden on this issue that I think we, as a council, need to discuss with the business owners that this affects. And I'm concerned that it's not only downtown businesses that are going to be affected, but this is potentially every automotive repair dealer in Bellevue that this will, and the zoning jurisdiction that this will impact.
Mr. Buckley?
I just wanted to get a point of clarification. Mrs. Blood, you said you were interested in postponing this to the 14th, you mean April 14th, the first meeting in April?
Right, that would give staff time to follow up on it. That would give Councilwoman Carmichael and I, who've been working with area businesses, time to clarify what's in the ordinance, the other issue being the garage doors. So, we want to make sure that if we put an ordinance out, that it's top-notch, that it's not something that's not done appropriately, and that we don't need to rush. There's no reason to rush on this. So, I just want to make sure that people know that, we understand that it's not effective the way it is, and we're going to fix it.
And also, I do understand the planning department's concerns with vehicles remaining on property, if they're dead storage vehicles or they're junk heaps or whatever. So, it's not like I'm against the planning department's inclusion of a timeframe, but I don't think the timeframe is adequate for the businesses to actually do business.
And we're not reinventing the wheel. There are many municipalities that have templates that we can follow that have found resolutions to that. We just have to find the one that fits the best.
I see no other discussion or questions, please vote.
All voted yes.
I'll now open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number 3757, you can do so at this time. Please state your name for the record.
Yep. My name is Raymond Blank, resident of Sarpy County in Bellevue. I am a business owner in Papillion as well as in Bellevue. We own, with a partner of mine, Ryan Davidson, we own Old Town Automotive, as well as Midlands Auto and Truck in Papillion. What we're concerned about is exactly what Mr. Carmichael said, you know, the timeframe and so forth like that. This is not also about the business owners and about the business itself. It's about the community and the residents of Bellevue and the people that bring their cars to our repair facilities to get worked on. If you have a motor go out or your repair is extensive and it's $3,000, $4,000, there's not a lot of people that just have that. So, they need time to figure out how they're going to do this, how they're going to get their money, how are they going to work out a payment plan, or figure out ride situation. It doesn't make any sense at all to make them tow a vehicle back to their house to let it sit in their driveway while they're trying to figure out these repairs. That is my concern about this timeframe on there. And I understand, I listen to what you guys said. Thank you for extending that and taking it into consideration. You know, again, like you said, I agree with the timeframe. You know, there needs to be one, because people have to understand they need to pick up their vehicles. But the same token is, if we get vehicles completed, don't have them billed out and paid by the customer, and then someone comes and repos a vehicle from us, you're virtually taking money out of our pockets to let us do our job and live. Also, without letting the people have time to figure out what they're going to use and how they're going to fix their car for transportation, to go pick up the kids from school and so forth, you're denying them that. You're putting them on the spot for everybody to have, with this time and economy, the money right away, just say, pooh, here it is. So, I think that's the biggest reason why we, you know, the timeframe of 14 days is just unrealistic, and it's definitely going to hurt business owners.
Councilwoman Blood?
As well as.
And since you own two garages, you've, I'm guessing you've probably seen this happen where maybe something did end up being towed to a lot, and then that person was able to pay the towing fee and get it out of the impound lot for much less than what they owed you financially, has that ever?
There is a bunch of different ways that individuals can get their vehicles, and they're not, it's a legal bind between the city and so forth like that. And the best thing we can do is actually just, as long as we're in control of the vehicle, that's the way it goes. But yeah, that's what we want to avoid, basically, you know? Two or three hits of, you know, doing motors, and then, you know, with the price, everybody knows it's not cheap. Two or three cars that people can't pay for, we allow our customers to, you know, at some case, to make payments or work with them until it's paid off to release the vehicle. If it gets towed out, they pick up the vehicle, essentially, then we can't pay our bills.
And we believe there's a resolution. It's just giving us time to figure out what that is, and we're not in a hurry to pass this. So, rest assured that both Councilman Carmichael and I will be communicators and let you guys know what's going on.
And it's huge, I mean, like I said, Papillion doesn't have this ordinance, you know, in play. You know, and it's not an issue out there, and I don't know what the issue is here and why it's got to be different. But, you know, with moving a shop, we just bought Old Town Automotive, me and my partner Ryan Davidson, and we plan to open up more shops, you know, and that would greatly impact our decision on opening shops in Bellevue by this ordinance, so.
We're going to hold you to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there others who would like to speak? Please do so.
My name is Terry Burish. I own Terry's Auto and Truck in Mission and Hancock Street down there, and I really agree with Ray, what he's saying on time limit. I wish there wasn't no time limit, because then it's something else we're going to have to please. And we're not going to leave the cars on a lot any longer than we have to. You know, we want to get rid of them too. But the other thing is that it sounds to me like the ordinance, you're going to have to have the garage doors closed, and you got to work on them inside the garage. And that is not very good if you don't have air conditioning in the summer. I wish that would be, you know, we do a lot of work right outside the garage doors, what, charging air conditionings, doing fuel injection flushes, things like that. And I wish you'd really reconsider that one too, because that really would put a burden on us. That's about all I have to say. But other than 14 days, I wish you could stretch that as far as you can, because like he said, you can't, even if you wanted to get rid of them, you can't. And I've had the experience where I've had one taken from the lot by the city, and it ended up costing me about $8,000 that I never received payment on, so. so. And I think I could have if I could have kept the car, or the truck, which it was. So that's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Blood?
Just for clarification, was that like what I was just talking about, when the car was impounded, and the person was able to go to the impound lot, pay much less than what they actually owed you?
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others who would like to speak? Please do so.
Chuck Frederick, one five one one, Madison Street. After the last meeting, I didn't know it was going to be fourteen days till after you talked about it, because you had the public hearing first, but I went over to the boat man over there, I don't know if he's here yet or not, but I talked to him, and I asked him if any of the city council people had been over to talk to him. And he said the only one that was there was Mr. Carmichael. And he would have spoke up last meeting, but he was on vacation. But to me, it seems it's kind of like selective enforcement. We've had that problem before, and I've been a victim of that. And I think we're creating so many ordinances without thinking them out. I think it's time to slow down and think more about them before you even present one, so we wouldn't have all this time taken that we are taking right now. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move ordinance number three seven five seven to the April fourteenth meeting.
Second.
A second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, Mr. Carmichael.
Counsel, I'd like to discuss the possibility of removing the two-week time limit from this ordinance and voting it up or down based on the merits of it, and then go back and address the issue of storage of vehicles on the lot. Remember, the inception of this ordinance was strictly for a permitted use in a zone of a business. That's all it was. It had nothing to do with the vehicles on the property. And if we, as a council, work to address that with the planning department and the local businesses on a timeframe, knowing full well that we would do that, I think that would be a fair assessment.
Councilwoman Blood?
But it doesn't address the issue of the garage doors. And that's a big issue for many of the car people that I spoke with, automotive people I spoke with. I just, I feel like it still needs some fixing. And I hear what you're saying, and that is sound, but there's still a couple minor issues that would not be fixed if we voted on it tonight.
So we have a second discussion. Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
The vote is four to one. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kay, I was voting to, I thought that was a motion by Councilwoman Carmichael, so I misunderstood. So I'm a yes vote on carrying it forward.
For April fourteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My misunderstanding. I thought that was a motion and a second over there, but I.
We'll move on to seven B, ordinance number three seven five eight. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven five eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about three seventy Plaza and Moss Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number thirty seven fifty eight, rezoning Lot One, three seventy west.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Mr.? Mr. Cook?
I'll make a motion to approve the small subdivision plot of Lot One, three seventy west.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven C, ordinance number three seven four seven. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven four seven, the one I like to read so much. An ordinance to amend Sections twenty nine point five dash three, twenty nine point five dash five, twenty nine point five dash six, twenty nine point five dash seven, twenty nine point five dash eight, twenty nine point five dash nine, twenty nine point five dash twelve, twenty nine point five dash fifteen, twenty nine point five dash sixteen, twenty nine point five dash eighteen, twenty nine point five dash twenty-two, twenty nine point five dash twenty-three, and twenty nine point five dash twenty-four, of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the composition of the Bellevue Tree Board, arborist licensing provisions, and penalties for violation of same, to add Sections twenty nine point five dash twenty-six through twenty nine point five dash twenty-nine, pertaining to license revocation procedures, to repeal Sections twenty nine point five dash three, twenty nine point five dash five, twenty nine point five dash six, twenty nine point five dash seven, twenty nine point five dash eight, twenty nine point five dash nine, twenty nine point five dash twelve, twenty nine point five dash fifteen, twenty nine point five dash sixteen, twenty nine point five dash eighteen, twenty nine point five dash twenty-two, twenty nine point five dash twenty-three, and twenty nine point five dash twenty-four, of the Bellevue Municipal Code is heretofore existing and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you, Kay. Mr. Preister, if your arm isn't tired yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Everything but the partridge in the pear tree, Kay, but thank you. I think some progress has been made. We've had some very good discussions, and this is progressing well. I'd like to let it sit until the next meeting to get some feedback tomorrow from the Tree Board and other people with the final one. So we haven't rushed it. I think we're doing deliberative changes. I think it's going to be for the better. And with that said, I would make the motion that we carry ordinance number three seven four seven to the next March twenty-fourth meeting.
Second.
But Kay, I hope it's your last reading.
Me, too. Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. Eight A, ordinance number three seven five nine. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance, an ordinance to amend Section five dash thirty-six through five dash forty of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to licensing for carnivals, circuses, amusement shows, and other public events, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading should be March the twenty-fourth. Eight B, ordinance number three seven six zero. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six zero, an ordinance to amend Section twenty-three dash twenty-two of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the requirement of a bond, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the repeal of Section twenty-three dash twenty-two as heretofore existing, and to provide for an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The third and final reading will also be March the twenty-fourth. Item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading. Nine A, ordinance number three seven six one. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six one, an ordinance to amend Sections four point one three, five point zero six, and five point zero seven, ordinance number three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance, regarding accessory structures in residential zoning districts, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing on this item will be Monday, March twenty-fourth. Nine B, ordinance number three seven six two. Kay, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six two, an ordinance to amend ordinance number three six one nine, the Bellevue zoning ordinance, by adding new Section eight point one four, regarding the keeping of horses in residential zoning districts, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will also be on Monday, March twenty-fourth. Nine C, ordinance number three seven six three. Could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six three, an ordinance to amend Section two dash two six three of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the civil service provisions for filling of vacant positions, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Second reading and the public hearing will be on Monday, March twenty-fourth. Item number ten, public hearing, other than ordinances, there are none. Eleven resolutions. Eleven A, resolution number twenty fourteen dash zero six, dissolution of the dock board and release of restrictions of monies associated with dock board. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution number two oh one four oh six, the dissolution of the dock board and release of restrictions of monies associated with the dock board, and direct that those monies be put into the general parks fund for the city of Bellevue.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business. Twelve A, B, C, D, E, and F is under consent agenda. G, reject original award of bid to AOI and accept second lowest bid of payless office furniture in the amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for furniture package D for public safety building. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we reject the original award of a bid to AOI, and we accept the second lowest bid of payless office furniture in the amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for furniture package D for the public safety building.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. H, approve supplement furniture order from payless office furniture in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars for public safety building. Councilwoman Blood?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the supplemental furniture order from payless office furniture in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents for the public safety building.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for trail construction to connect southwest Bellevue to the Keystone Trail. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve authorizing the mayor to sign as an interlocal agreement for trail construction to connect southwest Bellevue to the Keystone Trail.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Cook?
Is Mr. Follencamp still? John, can I just ask you a quick question? Just a little history here. Several years ago, when I was on the county board, there was discussion about the trails down in southwest. Some of that is still in the county. I just wanted, John, to ask you, this is basically going to connect Two Springs to where you would be able to get to the Papio Creek Trail.
All the way to the Papio Trail.
There at Capeport and like Kennedy Freeway.
Correct. There are six participants in this. Sarpy County is agreed to be the lead. We still have to go through Sarpy County Board. We still have to go through Papio NRD. But the way the agreement is written, it's once everybody is, nobody's committed until everybody's committed. But yes, this replaces some trail right about down from Capeport Road, where it attaches to the trail all the way up through Two Springs.
Okay. And this has been something that has, I know you represent some, a lot of the SIDs.
This was generated by, all of the SIDs in that area are all resident. SIDs control those boards, and they've had discussion for years, you know. Black Hawk has their trail. Oakhurst has part of their trail. There was an old Stonecroft asphalt trail. There's no connection through Piper's Glen. There's no connection through the west end of Trigaron. And so as we had meetings with these resident boards, the interest kept coming up about getting that trail completed. As you know, in your park plan, that trail is the Danielle Loop. It eventually goes even further west. I think it's been in that plan for a long time. And I think everybody, at least in all the resident SIDs I represent, are very happy that Bellevue's involved in this. They're happy that the county's involved with it, and we are continuing to urge the NRD to participate. Again, we're pretty confident we'll be successful, though we still have to go through all those steps.
Thank you.
Be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Preister?
Not so much a question, but I think this is an excellent example of a partnership with government when it works well. We hear criticism of when it doesn't. But the citizens brought it forward. The citizens said, "We want these trails connected to connect our neighborhoods. We want this access." And they were willing to pony up some money.
Absolutely.
They're willing to go to the county and ask the county for the partnership. County says, "We hope yes," but preliminarily, they are. The NRD is liking it. It's a part of our two thousand seven Master Parks Plan. So we're finally implementing something that's been on the books for years and years, and it brings our community together, these fragmented parks and fragmented parts of the community that aren't cohesive. It's also a part of complete streets. So we're doing better planning, we're pooling and partnering money, and we're doing what the public wants. So for those who criticize some public-private partnerships, I just want to highlight, here's a good one. And I thank everybody that's been involved. My thanks to all the SIDs who have led the effort.
Thank you.
Did you sign in, sir?
Sir, thank you. If you could just sign in.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, concerns? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve J, approve and accept the twenty thirteen Safer Grant in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifteen and nine hundred and forty dollars to pay salaries and benefits for an additional twelve firefighters for two years. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve and accept the two thousand thirteen Safer Grant in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, pay salaries and benefits for an additional twelve firefighters for two years.
Second. Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve K, continued discussion on street lighting standards and direction to planning department. It says Blood here, but I'm thinking it's Mr. Preister.
It's Councilman Preister, not Councilwoman Blood.
I will gladly defer, but thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. I did hand out to the council earlier a couple of items. One talks about guidelines for good exterior lighting plans. It includes promoting safety, but essentially, it highlights that outdoor lighting should be carefully designed with regard to placement, intensity, timing, duration, and color. Just because you have light, and lots of light, doesn't mean that it's good light. One illustration on these pictures shows a very bright light, but in the shadow outside of the light is a person. When you block the light, you clearly see a person standing there. Other images on here show excessive streetlights that cause distracted driving because of the glare and the way they're positioned. Another one shows a building that looks like daylight. It's early in the morning, and instead of the light shining down onto the areas where it should be, it's actually shining into the building. So a part of my concern with this, that I appreciate that Councilwoman Blood raised the issue for this week, is that we want lighting, we want a safe neighborhood, but we want focused lighting, so that the light is where we need it, no more excessive than what we need it, and that we don't, with that light, create additional problems. Our current standard allows or requires that lights are placed much closer than any other city around that I've been able to identify. The current feet spacing is a hundred and fifty, I believe, and in Lincoln, they have two hundred and forty feet. Most all other communities have two hundred and fifty feet or more between streetlights. Most all other communities have two hundred and fifty feet or more between streetlights. So they have found it workable. What Lincoln does is lower the light. We currently do the poles twenty-five feet high. Lincoln has them at twenty feet, which is still way over any trucks or any impediments that might knock into them, but it brings the light closer to the light surface where you want it, on the street or the sidewalk. So you get focused light. We have, I believe, a hundred watt bulb and Lincoln uses a seventy because they bring the light closer. So they're paying less for the cost of electricity. And by the way, again, I'll reiterate, just for streetlights in the city of Bellevue alone, the city of Bellevue pays one million dollars a year and our electrical costs are going up. And so that million, every time we make an annexation, is going to increase the cost to the city. So I propose that we have some greater spacing in areas where that spacing may need to be close, curves or, and we would still keep them at intersections, that we use a better system than a simple measurement of a hundred and fifty feet. I want the light, but I would like it to be focused. A lot of research has been done. This is pretty easy to determine what's best. One other aspect regarding the cost is LED lighting. We're not using LED lighting or requiring it. The city of David City completely made all of their streetlights LED. And that was about two years ago, I believe. They're currently saving about forty percent on the cost of those lights. The latest generation of lights that I just saw from General Electric promotes them as saving fifty percent of the cost of electricity on the lights. They also advertise that their length of service is fifty thousand hours, approximately thirteen and a half years. So the investment, which is greater than a normal light, and as that price comes down, it's somewhere in the range of three to four hundred dollars. Even if the city paid for that, it would more than pay for itself and going out and making the transition. So I'm suggesting that our planning department look at this more closely, evaluate the latest in information from other cities, the latest LED lighting and the actual savings, and then come back with that in an ordinance where we can actually save money for the city and get better lighting in the process. So I appreciate the dialogue and thank you for listening to my long explanation.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cook.
Just real quick, Don. Are we given instructions to go back to the planning department and have them to reevaluate? What, I guess they made no recommendations, is that right?
They had made a recommendation that we not change anything.
Okay.
But I objected, and I think the council wanted some additional information at the last meeting. So this would direct Chris to further gather that information, come back. I believe it would go back to, well, I don't know, Chris, would it go back, it would go back to the planning commission for a hearing and then it would come back to us.
And I think you were pretty descriptive in what you want this to go to, or at least for them to consider, but we need, all of us need to make sure if we have anything specific he gets to Chris so that the planning board can look at the whole package.
Right.
And not go back and forth.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So with that, do I need to put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Buckley?
I think it's.
It's just discussion here, but to direct.
If you want to direct staff, then yeah, you'll need to make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion to direct the planning director to draft some potential ordinance regulating the spacing, lighting, and style or type of lighting for our streetlights in the city and to gather data from the most current sources on LED lighting and spacing.
Are you getting all of that, Mr.?
Bring that before the, could you repeat that, Don?
He's writing as fast as he can. Hold on. Do you need anything repeated, Mr. Sucho?
Bring that before the planning commission.
Case recording.
Okay.
I would second whatever Don just said.
I'd like to add one point to this, though, too, that Chris also needs to check with OPBD and see what they will do. I mean, as far as if we'll have to start this as a new program or how much they would do with existing lights. And from what I've heard before, they won't change out any of the existing, but they may work with us and the other ones, but we'd have to find out on that.
They will install new lights as LEDs if that's the direction. Those lights would then be the responsibility as far as maintenance and also the cost of the lights. Installation and maintenance would be the responsibility of the SID, the developer, whoever, you know, at the time. And then ongoing maintenance, which under the HP Sodium Lights is done by OPBD, that would be the responsibility of the, again, the SID, the homeowners association, or the city if it's in the city, for LED lights.
A new ones, correct.
Yes.
And I think it would be good to check with David City and with Lincoln as well because Lincoln, I don't know if LES in Lincoln does the streetlights for the city, if the city does them themselves, but they're doing it and both of those cities are doing it effectively, so they may have some guidance for us as well. And I'm not rushing it.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve L, adopt the audit committee charter and approve the appointment of Paul Cook for a one-year term and Jerry Blasek and Dave Sanborn for a two-year term. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the audit committee charter and approve the appointment of Paul Cook for a one-year term and Jerry Blasek and Dave Sanborn for two-year terms.
Second. Second by Mr. Knutson. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, public requests to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution number thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public should not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city councilor employee, or a member of the general public and City Code Section two dash six eight regarding manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Welcome.
My name's Steve Draper. I live at ninety-eight oh seven South Twenty-Fourth Street. I just have three things I'd like to talk about. Hopefully I'll have enough time to do that. First, I want to echo Chuck Frederick's comments on number of ordinances that are coming through. I imagine probably the reason we're seeing so many right now is because in the past we've not kept up to date on getting these ordinances being current and accurate. And I'm just hoping that we will, if that's the case, I hope we will accelerate that process and get this over and done with. I mean, most cities don't have this many ordinances that they're having to change all the time, so hopefully we'll get past that soon. Second, I think most of members of the council saw the Omaha World-Herald article this morning where our city administrator was mentioned by name in reference to the Civil Service Commission meeting last month. And I wasn't there, so I can't attest what happened there. All I can go do is go by what I read in the newspaper article, but from what I can gather, the chairman of the Civil Service Commission felt that the city administrator was interfering too much in there and asked the city administrator to stop interrupting their proceedings. And that in and of itself doesn't bother me, but what bothers me is what I read in the paper is that the, essentially the city administrator said, "Well, I'm different. I can, I have special status." And I think we need to go back to our own ordinances we have and in reference to appointment of members. It says the members of the Civil Service Commission shall be appointed by the city administrator. They're not ruled by the city administrator. They're appointed by the city's administrator and with the approval of the city council. And my understanding, the Civil Service Commission, their role is an advisory capacity. They're there to advise the city on what they ought to do. All five of these people, they serve at no salary. They do it their own time and no expense. And it doesn't make sense for our city administrator to be antagonizing these people that are serving our city at their own expense. And I would just urge our city administrator to just sit back and watch and wait for the recommendations rather than interfering in, into their proceedings. The last thing I wanted to talk about, and also I want to say that I'm proud of this city council for a number of reasons, but one is the fact that we mention God twice whenever we have our meetings. When we have the Pledge of Allegiance, we mention God, and we also mention God when we have our invocation. And I just want to say, I want to speak up for that it's a good thing that we have religion in the public arena. We all know that people, we want our citizens to obey the laws, and for most people, most, ninety percent of the people, they do what is right because they feel it is the right thing to do. And religion enhances that desire for people to do that. If we don't have a religion in our communities, we can't hire enough policemen to enforce our laws. So I just want to read a couple of things. One is from our state constitution. The preamble to our state constitution says, "We, the people, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, do ordain and establish the following declaration of rights and frame of government as the constitution of the state of Nebraska." So our state constitution starts out invoking God in the very beginning. And also our state constitution says in regard to religious freedom, "All persons have a natural and indefeasable right to worship Almighty God according to dictates of our own consciences." And it goes on to say, "Religion, morality, and knowledge, however, be essential to good government. It shall be the duty of the legislature to pass suitable laws to protect every religious denomination in the peaceful enjoyment of its own mode of public worship and encourage schools and the means of instruction." And then our constitution goes on to talk about the rights of free speech. And we have that in our community, and I hope we keep it in our community because there are areas of our country that are trying to take away some of those rights. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for listening.
I will echo what Mr. Draper said. The sad thing is that unfortunately, church members, people, Christians, do not vote any more than non-Christians. And I think it's, like you said, I think it's time for the Christian people to get involved with the city and with the government and the national government. Two meetings, our last meeting, I said, I said that you could watch the city council meetings on YouTube and fast forward, and I had a number of people who told me they did that, so I was pleased to hear that. And so that's a nice thing, that in order to just watch what you want to watch rather than go through the whole, the whole meeting. Also, last time, I talked about transparency, the lack of transparency. And I could go on for a number of things, but the two things I talked about was the task force list. I don't have that list yet. I don't know who's on those committees and what their job descriptions are. And also, I've been talking for numerous times, and so has Jim Mudry, about the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the, that the fire department wanted the city to collect. And that's a pretty simple thing to get, I would think, but I haven't heard anything on either one of those. Also, there was one council person who had suggested that the at-large position be eliminated. I haven't seen the action in that yet. I'd like to see something develop. And then another thing I said, too, last meeting, was that about a person who is running for office, who already has term left on their office, that I didn't want, I don't want a law, there's not a law, I understand that. It's just that I think it's the right thing to do is to resign from your current office because those people elected you for four years and now you're going to skip, you're going, you're going to jump ship. It doesn't, I think it's just the right thing to do. The other thing, too, is that in the pre-council meeting, I'd heard before, too, that you're going to hire an HR person. With the city, with the finances, the way they are right now, I would, I would encourage a hiring freeze and wait until after the end of the year to, for any new people to decide who should be hired and who, and who should be fired or whatever it may have to be. The other thing I want to talk about, too, is that on that ordinance that, that on the, that we talked about earlier about the people across the street, they had, the way it is now, the way you do it, and I would like to see a change. What you do now is you have the public input on, on something like that, and then you people talk about it. And this is one I wasn't that up on at that point, and so I didn't have a chance to express how I felt until after, afterwards. But I think anytime, it would be a lot better and more people might participate if the council and anybody else would, would talk about what they're saying first, their thoughts, and then open the public opinion so we could express ours. I would certainly have asked at that time if it was done that way. I said, "Has anybody gone over and talked to that man?" I still think it's selective enforcement and I think it's, the ordinance is a bad one. Thank you.
My name is Jim Mudry, twelve oh seven Rebecca Court. And I just guess I want to say amen to the remarks of Steve Draper. Those words from the constitution are fresh in my mind. I just looked over it yesterday, as a matter of fact, so I'm glad he brought that up. The only other thing I have is the Safer Grant that we approved, we approved tonight for salaries benefits for two years for twelve additional firefighters. Just better be prepared in two years to pick up one point seven or it'll be more after that time, one point eight million dollars in cost for the city because there won't be any turning back and saying, "We want to get rid of those twelve firefighters now." So, thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'd like the record to reflect that I'm being excused from the quorum and we still have a quorum, so I may take an opportunity to speak during public comment.
Okay, did you make a record? Thank you.
I'm Carol Blood. I live at twenty-eight twelve Jack Pine Street. Some of you may know me as the at-large representative on the Bellevue City Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell the council members thank you for all the hard work that they've done this past five years in economic development. Recently, I read an article that I found very disturbing that basically said that Bellevue was not moving forward and this was an ambassador for Bellevue, which I found very disappointing. You've done a very effective job of bringing in development at the Wilson Concrete Plant, at Thirty-Sixth and Cape Hart, the new convention center, and that's a lot to be proud of, and the list goes on and on. But in addition to that, I want to speak to everybody that represents Bellevue, including the people who come up to this podium. People that come up and are negative at this podium may think that they're being, that they are being, I can't think of the word I want to use, that they're being somebody who is standing up for the citizens of Bellevue, that they're a martyr, that's the word I want to use, that they're a martyr for the city of Bellevue. Saint Joan of Arc, that's a martyr. You know, like my grandpappy used to say, "You can't build something up if you're constantly tearing it down." It's time for Bellevue to put on its big boy pants. If we want future development and we want people to be interested in our economic development, then we have to show a unified front. When people bring gossip to us, we need to ask them where that gossip came from and hold them accountable. hold them accountable. When people say something negative about Bellevue, it's okay to say negative things, but think about the words that come out of your mouth. If we want to compete with Papillion, and we want to compete with La Vista, then we have to shake off this small-town attitude where we're really worried about everybody else's business, and think about the big picture. And that big picture is development and moving Bellevue forward. And so, as a citizen of Bellevue, I'm asking the other citizens and our city representatives, take that in mind when they're out on the streets, when they're speaking in a public forum, that we have a lot to be proud of, and we've come a long ways in five years, and we're not going to fix things overnight, but with strategic, strategic planning and unified front, and you saw the vast majority of things we voted on tonight, we all vote in favor of. We should be proud of the work that we do, and Bellevue should be proud of the work we do, and you don't always have to agree with us, but know that we are fighting for the rights of the citizens here in Bellevue, and know that we are working hard to create a better Bellevue. And so, I thank everybody. Again, I ask everybody to keep a positive attitude, help us help you move Bellevue forward. And for the people, again, that think they're martyrs that constantly come here and are negative, you reap what you sow. Again, you can't build something up if you keep tearing it down. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak?
My name is Julie Garrett, and I had just a few observations and questions. One of my observations is, is that when the council is considering new ordinances, I think they need to be more proactive with, with discussing changes with business owners. By seeing one business that's doing something, or something looks terrible, or they don't like this, or constituent is not concerned, is concerned, I don't think that's fair to all the other business owners in town. There may be an issue here that could be worked out, but to pass an ordinance for all of that type of business is a problem. I also think there needs to be some consideration of common sense exceptions with some of these ordinances. There is a small business here in Bellevue that has been here for a long, long, long time that is actively looking for a new place in Bellevue because of a small right-of-way behind his business, fifty feet by twenty feet, that is needed to go on to an electrical substation. He needs that area to pull his trucks into, to get food into his restaurant. They're not there very often, but every time they are, he gets a ticket. And I think there's a lot of other examples of these kinds of things at different levels, so I really think that all the businesses across Bellevue, when there's going to be ordinance needs to, you know, need to talk to them a little bit more to see what they think. As far as the lighting goes, my questions are, is this lighting going to be like phased in, like in the new developments? Or is it, and incrementally, as something goes out in Bellevue, a new one is replaced, although with the spacing thing, I don't know how that would work. But living in Bellevue, the, the lighting is pretty good, with the exceptions of the places where there are no streetlights. As far as them not focusing in the proper area, I think that's a matter of just moving, however it would be, adjusting the light itself. From experience, OPBD putting in new equipment is staggeringly expensive, and I don't know, I'd like to know how long it would take, also with the LED lighting, to recoup the expense if the entire city was going to have the lights replaced instead of, you know, like I said, incrementally phasing them in. I personally have a problem with LED lights here because they don't burn hot enough to melt snow and ice off of them, so, you know, there's always a, an issue with that. And then the last thing I'd like to say is that I do believe that the, the city is doing a great job, and I do believe that the citizens of the city should have a right to get up and voice their opinions on any single thing that they would like to voice it on, and that no one is a martyr, and that no one is wrong. And things that are published in the paper are there, you have a choice to read them or not, but I think the rules that you set down for public discussions possibly need to be made a little bit more clear as far as speeches that have no point, or accusations or belittling the people of Bellevue, who do have a right to voice their opinions. Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll close. A public request to be heard, fourteen adjournment. Mr. Cook?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank God. Happy Saint Patrick's Day on the seventeenth, finally the first day of spring, March twentieth. Next council meeting will be March twenty-fourth. Good night.